Okay, we're gonna be starting. All right, welcome back. We are gonna go with item number five. I wanna make sure, and then item number two, and then item number six, and we may postpone three to another meeting, depending on what time we get out of here. So, taking into account people's... So, staff, what do we have? Item number five, review three additional projects: Regnar Creek Trail, Citywide Community Gardens, and Linda Vista Trail, added during the adoption of the five-year capital improvement program, fiscal years 2020 to 2024, for consistency with the city's general plan. Recommended action, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution finding that the proposed additional projects to the capital improvement plan are: one, exempt from SEQA; two, consistent with the city's general plan. So, and the tentative city council meeting date will be looked at in December 19th. Staff, please introduce yourselves and share with us your reports.
Thank you, Chair. We have a couple of special guests here with us today from the Public Works Department. We have the Public Works Director Roger Lee and the CIP manager Michael Zimmerman to present this item for you. It'll be a brief presentation, we promise, and we can entertain some questions from you. So with that, Michael?
Good evening. I'm here tonight to describe three projects and ask you to find them in conformance with the city's adopted general plan. Before I start, I wanna make a quick correction. In the staff report, we did indicate that we were going to back to council on December 3rd. In the agenda, it says December 19th. We are in fact not going to either. This will be, once you make your finding, that will be...
This is the final?
This is the final.
Oh, thank you. Oh, City Council did throw it back to us, exactly. Got it.
So, to help keep this presentation brief and organized, it's organized as follows. So again, the objective tonight is to find three projects in conformance with the general plan. Three projects are listed here: Regnar Creek Trail, Citywide Community Gardens, Linda Vista Trail. A little bit of the background of why we're bringing these projects forward. These projects were added as part of the recent annual CIP approval process. They were not proposed by staff, so they were added by council at the direction of council. And as we reviewed those two new projects, there was a determination made that the Regnar Creek Trail, although the feasibility study has been reviewed and found in conformance, the actual project, we felt would be better to bring that back and just verify that that is in fact in conformance. This just explains a couple of government code sections that are applicable and describes why we need to bring this back and why we're asking you to take action. And here's three project descriptions for each project. Regnar Creek Trail, it's a bike pedestrian trail along Regnar Creek from Pacifico to East Estates. So, the council has taken action on this. They have funded the feasibility study, the design and environmental clearance, and they have also authorized $2.25 million for the construction of the Citywide Community Garden, this was a proposal that was an offshoot from the McClellan Ranch Preserve Community Garden Program. We had asked or requested 1.5 million for that project. City Council felt that there was enough interest in the community to look at alternatives to fund community gardens in other locations, so they allocated $300,000 from that 1.5 to do that. Again, this is a slightly different project. It's going to fund a grant funding program for neighborhood groups or associations to come together and propose to build a community garden in one of their neighborhood parks. And then there's Linda Vista Trail. This is a trail that runs along a whole old haul route and connects McClellan Road to Linda Vista Park. City has the opportunity to get the land donated if they would agree to fund, so the city council went forward on June 18th of this year and funded $615,000 to cover the cost of the design and construction of this trail. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Questions from commissioners to staff?
How much is the land which is getting donated for the Linda Vista Trail? Like, what's the size?
What's the size of the land?
Mm-hmm.
It's about 1,700 linear feet, about 10 feet wide.
About 1,700 square foot, okay. And the rest of the land is already publicly owned? Like, apart from that strip?
Yeah, one end terminates at McClellan Road, right by the preserve, and the other that ends to Linda Vista Park.
Okay, and the rest of the land, apart from this patch, is already owned by...
It's either private owners on one side or the Deep Cliff Golf Course on the other side.
The entirety of this project is built on that donated land?
It's just an old road that somebody owns that they're willing to donate in exchange for us building a trail.
Okay. And for clarification, who's the owner? Do we know? Who donated?
Richard Lowenthal.
It was the former, okay. Former mayor, so I want to make clear. Okay, thank you.
I was wondering if this 700 by 10 feet, if that is included in our citywide parkland acreage, or what happens with trails with regards to the parkland acreage total? Is it included?
I believe it will be added once it's developed.
Okay. And this is a slightly different scenario because this is just the road, whereas for Regnar Creek, you would have the trail on the side of the creek, and then you have the creek itself. Now, would that be included in parkland acreage at all, since we don't actually own the land?
I don't believe so.
So, going back then, so would the 700 by 10, it's not gonna be included in parkland for the trail? Is that correct?
The 1,700 by 10 would be...
1,700, okay. So, it's not gonna count for the parkland totals for the square footage? So, I'm bringing this up because we have the three acres per thousand residence in order to be met, and I'm wondering if that's gonna change the total at all. And then, if this does change the total, will it change the total for Regnar Creek Trail when that's added in? You know, do either of those alter it?
I'd have to get back to you to be 100% sure, but I think that the square footage would be added to the total parkland acreage.
That land is being deeded to the city?
Yes.
For the Linda Vista Trail. However, for the Regnar Creek Trail, that land is, continues to be the land, the property of the water company.
Water district, yes.
A water district. So, I've done that before. So, that would not, that would not become, you know, that's not becoming...
It's not city-owned property, so that probably would not be added to the total.
So, as a kind of a reminder, when we went over the CIP previously, we had found that there was a problem with the parkland equity and the distribution, and that's why I brought that up. I'm sorry to muddy the waters with that, but here we are adding parkland on the west side of Cupertino, and that was the sticking point with the CIP. So, it may be that we're going to have to modify the CIP, our findings on that, and I was told that it is, that is okay if our findings state that, that there is an exception, that the parkland equity issue at the general plan is not being met, or the spirit of it, I believe is how we worded it, that the spirit of the general plan with regards to parkland equity is not being met in our final finding. So, at some point, we'll have to discuss that.
So, I would just argue that the spirit of the, the spirit of the general plan is to add the space when you can, and if it happened to be there, we wouldn't, we're not, we're not spending money on this land.
That's correct.
So, it's not, it's not an issue of differentially spending in one place or, you know, one place or another. I mean, there is, it's finished around the trail.
Well, I would argue that even though it's coming to us, you know, as a donation, it's still parkland that's being added to a part of the city that's not being added to another part of the city. And if, if I recall the item six consent calendar item, the regards to mitigation fees, I believe that had a statement in there saying that they were aware that there was a parkland equity issue in the city. I can look that up. If somebody remembers this already, it was at the last city council meeting, consent calendar, item six, talked about the parkland mitigation fees, and it seemed to be indicating that there, there was an equity issue.
Anybody else with any comments or questions?
I'll just comment that it's a little unusual, it's unusual, the path that this has come back to us. I'm glad it has. You know, I think that the Linda Vista Trail happens to be a very unusual one because that's one that's been in the general plan. The aspiration to make that part of the city's network has been there for a long time, unlike many of the other projects we've had here. So, I think that it's really great. And then, you know, I think that the community garden had a pretty rough road coming down, but glad to see, I think that's actually a good move to have people look. This was something that, when I was on Parks and Rec, very early on, had suggested distribution of community gardens around the city, if that was possible. That's something that they took up in the master plan, and so I'm really glad to see there's some, some dollars coming into it. I think that that means it'll happen sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Okay, so consent item number six, which was passed, on PDF four, let's see, "The Need for Parkland, Park Dedication Fees As They Were Identified When the Fee Was Enacted Remains As The City's Current Park Area Per Resident Does Not Yet Meet the Park Acreage Standard In The Park Dedication Fee Ordinance And As Development Continues
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? We'll go to the public. Fill out your cards. You get three minutes. Fill out the blue card, pound it out. We've got Peggy Griffin, and then I think we have some other cards that have been put into the box.
Commissioner, staff, I'm Peggy Griffin. Can you, does this work? If I just put it up there? Ah, good. Okay, this is the Linda Vista Park, right here. This is the haul road that you're talking about, the Linda Vista Trail. In 2014, there was a parkside feasibility study that discussed the costs of these different segments. My concern, I know you're talking about a slightly different subject, but I wanna bring this up to your attention. The estimates for this trail on the city's, right now, it's estimated to be $615,500. In 2014, this trail was estimated to be between 3.5 million and 5.2 million to do this trail. Now, the cheapest section of it was if you did option one, which was 1.255, just for, not the construction part, but to make sure that the trail, sorry, I'm making you crazy. The up slope creek walls, golf ball protection, was 400,000. Slope plantings, new parking areas, you're not gonna do, but my concern is that this is so much higher than what's estimated right now, that I'm concerned that it's gonna be over budget, that it was underestimated, and that's more money on the west side that doesn't go to the east side. You're already talking over half a million dollars. And the other issue is, I thought that the school sites were counted in parkland, and we don't own those, so you could possibly count the creekside trail as parkland if you're using the same idea. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on item number five. Is that what your intent, Lisa?
Two.
We're five, I believe.
All right, you're doing, well, let me just, yeah, no, I wanna talk to you now.
You wanna talk to us now? All right, item five, okay.
Let me talk. Okay. First of all, Commissioner Moore, I do not believe you're muddying the waters, what I believe you're doing, and I thank you for it, is trying to make an effort to clear the muddy waters we have. So, thank you. I too have a concern that this trail gets counted as parkland and then reduces what's required throughout the city. And there was a comment made by, I don't remember which commissioner, about this, this trail being in the works for a long time or being a wish list, and then it was shown on that map, so I know that's accurate. There's parks on the east side that have been a wish list for a very long time, and they're starting going nowhere. So, that's just why I had to say about that. Also, I wanna clarify, it's not just Richard Lowenthal, a former mayor, but it's his wife Ellen, who owns the land as well, so she's also part of the donating, I would think. And I too have big concerns because this project, to do this, to be honest, I wasn't here when the discussion to reduce the cost from over $2 million to do just the trail got down to the 615,000. I don't know how it was changed, but I am very suspicious that it will stay at that figure. And so, I share Peggy's concerns about the actual cost. When you consider what happened at McClellan Ranch to do all the, what was done there, and the price kept going up and up and up and up. And two years ago, the prices of this kind of construction were less, so that's actually a low figure, that one point...
Five years.
Five years ago. It's actually a low number to begin with because it's five years old. So, anyway, I think that's it.
Thanks, Lisa. Question for...
May I have a question for Lisa?
Go ahead.
You mentioned something about McClellan Ranch. Could you give some more history on that? You mentioned something about cost, cost escalations on McClellan Ranch?
Oh, when they did the improvements there, the little blacksmith shop and this, and all these little things that they finished and are lovely, what did it, what did it do, Chad? Do you know? Double in price? By the time it was done, it was crazy. Double may be an exaggeration. I don't know the exact amount. It just changed orders, gap in time to get it done, you know, various things made the cost go way above budget.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do have a question about the point Peggy raised, about the difference in costs for the tail as proposed now versus what was proposed a few years ago, and if you could set some light on that, that would be great.
Well, the scope of work that was proposed and authorized by council is different than what I saw Peggy put up there on her screen. It's quite a bit different. It's a footpath. It's not a class one trail. So, it is very different, and that was all vetted out through council prior.
And Commissioner Moore, so even a footpath will count as green area for the city?
Well, my issue with this is that, it's my understanding that the community gardens are being started at McClellan? Is that correct?
Are the community gardens being started at McClellan?
It says community garden citywide, but we're talking about McClellan Ranch. Is that correct?
Well, there's two, there's, there's the, there's the garden that's at McClellan Ranch Preserve. That's the 1.2 million that originally started out at 1.5, and then when council cleaned off the 300,000, that's what would be at community gardens throughout the city. And that's what the Planning Commission is looking at for conformance this evening. The improvement that's scheduled at McClellan Ranch has already come to you and has been confirmed.
We're just looking at the 300,000 dispersed, so...
Yes.
For a consistency finding, that's fine. Where we have an issue is with the Linda Vista Trail, adding parkland on that side. So, in concept, you have two trails, one on each side, which is equitable, but you have the increase of parkland on the west side.
What's counted, yes.
Right.
What's counted, officially counted in the city's rosters as opposed to what's usable.
So, I mean, if we're going to be, you know, precise, then we've got the same finding that we had when we did the CIP before. I mean, which is, it's fairly simple to just add that, add that line in like we did before. And it doesn't sound, after I spoke to the attorney, that that is an issue. It's just whether or not we agree that this is, that there is a lack of equity. So, if we agree with that, then we simply add the sentence and, and say that, you know, accept that there is a, an issue, you know, where there's some inconsistency with the general plan with respect to, with equity, or we can word it, you know, somehow differently.
Okay.
Commissioner Moore?
You look like you're ready to jump in there. Okay. Is there, is there a motion to approve this?
Sure. I'll make it.
Okay. Is there a second before we get to deliberations?
I won't approve it as written.
You wanna make a modification before that? But, okay, is there a second? Second holds? No second?
I wanna hear what Commissioner Moore wants to say.
All right.
Let's look at the resolution.
Can I make a comment?
Counselor, please go ahead and come close to the mic.
So, I recognize that there was a previous resolution with similar issues with regard to equitable access, and in discussing with the city attorney, I just wanna, we would like it to be more specific in this ordinance, if this is the direction you're going in, to finding something that is either not in conformance or specifically saying that you find it in conformance, but you have these concerns about this policy. So, just a quick thing on, on the finding that we're supposed to be making. This is overall, we're looking at whether these three projects are in conformance with the general plan. And conformity in this context and in state law, you're looking at the plan holistically. And so, you may find that this doesn't meet some aspects of the plan, but meets others, and your, your issue here is to try and balance all of the different policies that the general plan has against the specific projects that we're talking about. And so, it's not, something is not necessarily out of conformity with the general plan if it's in tension with just one policy. You have to look at it in a balanced setting. And so, to the extent that we are talking about equitable issues, and I understand that that's been raised, what I would encourage you to do is to name the policy that you're talking about, and then to make an actual determination as to whether you find that these projects are not in conformity with the general plan as a whole, or whether you find that they are in conformity with the general plan as a whole, notwithstanding the fact that they are in tension with one of these policies. Does that make sense? So, you're looking at overall conformity, and you can mention in your findings that you find that there's some tension between the projects and one of the policies, but we need a determination as to overall conformity.
Okay, so I can go with overall conformity, but I'd like a statement about the acreage being added to the west side, and, and also that the city, by their own admission, says that we are, has stated that we are deficient on parkland throughout the city. And, and, you know, make that statement that, you know, for where, you know, the, perhaps that the east side is park deficient and it continues to have the development, but I don't, this could get very long and rambling, but if there was some way we could do that.
Would you like to make a proposal to say that overall, you find conformity in the plan, however, there is an issue on equity in terms of parkland distribution between the east side and the west side?
Right, and that we're, this, this, this resolution is increasing the west side parkland acreage.
I don't believe there's any definition of east side and west side in the general plan. So, I don't, I really just don't think that that's something that can be considered. There's no, you know, there's been talk in the past about having things like, for instance, the bike plan looks at the amount of, the amount of distance you are from a park, but that's not something that exists in the general plan, so...
Well, I think the, the general plan makes it a little bit difficult when they have a policy that says that in park deficient areas that you wouldn't allow in lieu of fees. And then, how is, how is that defined, a park deficient area? I would assume that means an area of the city that has less than three acres per thousand residents, which, if you start digging into the data, you're gonna find that that is the east side. And there is a portion of the north part of Cupertino, which is also deficient, north central.
Are you saying east of Wolf?
Most definitely, but also, but also, when you consider the amount of population density which will be going into the Valco area, and, right. Well, that's actually west, east and west.
East and west.
Or you could argue that, you know, the state of the world right today is that, you know, you don't know. Right now, there's a dead, you know, there's the remains of a dead mall there now, so, you know, obviously, there are people there.
Even, even without the addition of population there, that area is park deficient, and that that has already been demonstrated. It was demonstrated during arguments regarding the hills of Valco.
So, counselor, is there a way we can streamline this and get to a quicker resolution? I know you're working on that, and I wanna keep us germane on, on topic.
Yeah. So, I believe the policy that we are discussing right now is policy RPC-2.3 on parkland distribution, which says we strive for an equitable distribution of parks and recreational facilities throughout the city. Park acquisition should be based on the following priority list, and then it talks about three categories, high priority, medium priority, and low priority. And those are not set out in geographical bounds, but just based on whether or not parks in that, in a particular neighborhood are meeting the standard or not meeting the standard. What I would propose that we do, based on this discussion, certainly for consideration, is to modify finding number three in your resolution, to read that the Planning Commission notes that these projects add parkland to the west side of the city, which is identified as a low priority pursuant, for, for park acquisition pursuant to general plan policy RPC-2.3. Nevertheless, the Planning Commission finds, in accordance with Cupertino Municipal Code, based on the evidence in the record, that these projects are in conformance with the city's general plan.
That sounds good.
Is that your motion, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
You have a second here. Okay. Discussion? All right, we'll vote. Motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Takahashi absent. Good night, folks. So, just for clarification, are we moving to item number two? Is that correct? All right, wanna make sure. Okay, we are entering the study session capability. Study session regarding amendments being proposed to city standards for parkland dedication and fees, park maintenance fees, and chapter 18 dot 24 dedications and reservations, and this 2014 certified general plan amendment, housing element update and associated rezoning draft EIR. The recommended action is provide any input to staff regarding the proposed amendments. Tentative council hearing date, December 3rd. Commissioner Moore, you have a statement?
Yes, I would like to make a brief statement before the Planning Commission proceeds to item two. Agenda item two is a study session regarding city standards for parkland dedication and fees. As most people are here are aware, I am one of four petitioners in a lawsuit currently pending in court. And to relating to the Valco SB 35 application, based on my involvement in that lawsuit, I am out of an abundance of caution, and to avoid any potential appearance of impropriety, recusing myself from deliberations and any commission recommendation on agenda item two.
Okay, we will, Commissioner Moore, as you recuse yourself, we will begin staff report or discussion.
So, we have a couple more special guests tonight as well. We have our city attorney here with us. We also have the Assistant Director of Public Works slash the city engineer. So, present a brief presentation for you, and then we entertain questions. Thank you. Chad?
Welcome, Chad. Welcome to the Cupertino Tonight Show. We're going late night.
Thank you for having me. I'm here to talk about parkland dedications, and we're proposing some ordinance amendments, and I'm gonna go through those briefly here, and we'll be able to take any input that you may have on that afterwards. The city council work program for this year included an item to clarify objective standards and recommended that amendments be made to the parkland dedication ordinance sections of the code, as well as other sections. The Planning Commission and city council recommended making express standards for parkland dedication. We're bringing forth these proposed changes as a first phase of this effort for implementation. The proposed modifications include definitions that were added to section 1308020 to provide clarity, including the requirement to situate parks at ground level and to dedicate land in fee simple. Section 130- Section thirteen oh eight oh three oh was modified to provide further clarity as to the requirement to address parkland demands. Amendments are proposed to consolidate existing exceptions and credits within the code, including those that further align the Cupertino municipal code with state laws. The city continues to waive park dedication fees to incentivize development of affordable housing consistent with the city's housing element policies and the BMR procedural manual. The draft ordinance included potential amendments to the formulas that are used for calculating the parkland dedication area and the in lieu fees in order to provide better clarity and to amend the average number of persons per household to be based on federal census data. At this time, staff is proceeding, staff is recommending that additional study and analysis be performed before proceeding with the amendment to the average household size, but this is a, a good opportunity to obtain planning commission input on this item. The proposed modifications have express standards for areas that should not be included in or receive credits as part of the computations for parkland areas. These areas include setbacks, private yards and open spaces necessary to provide services to a development such as streets. Modifications to the timing of dedication and fee payment requirements in order to better align with existing practices. And modifications to chapter fourteen oh five park maintenance fee and chapter eighteen point two four dedications and reservations are proposed in order to provide consistency with chapter thirteen oh eight, which is the parkland dedication fee. The clarifications identified above, if adopted by city council as part of the proposed modifications, would not change the less, less than significant impact analyzed and disclosed in the final EIR because the parkland dedication ordinance as modified, together with the other requirements and policies identified in the final EIR, would still adequately mitigate potential impacts that future development would have on park and recreation services. The proposed amendments do nothing to significantly change the application or effectiveness of the parkland dedication ordinance or other policies. For this reason, the decision by the city council to clarify the parkland dedication standards has no effect on the analysis or conclusions of the final EIR and would not result in any new impacts not previously identified in the final EIR. So the impacts remain less than significant. So other than that, I'm here to ask, answer any questions that you may have and go from there.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Well, Commissioner Feng, Commissioner Saxena, any questions?
I'll start with a procedural one. So I'm curious, there's never anything wrong with having a study session, but I'm curious about the next steps that you've envisioned on this issue.
So after tonight, we'll, we'll take your input and see what, if anything, needs to be addressed with the ordinances. And then after this, we'll be going to city council in early December to have a first reading of those ordinances. This is just a first phase and there, there is potentially going to be further phases after this to further refine these, but these are, are strictly being done to kind of move some of these items forward in, in relatively short order.
So it's highly unusual that we're not having a hearing before this goes to council and I'd like you to address that.
Sure, the difference is that the parkland dedication standards is not a land use regulation and so there is a state law requirement that amendments to the general plan or the zoning code must first come to the planning commission for a hearing and written recommendations must be made from the planning commission to the city council prior to the city council's consideration. These, this, this, these code sections are not located in the zoning code and are not land use regulations and for that reason, there isn't a state or local law requirement to conduct a hearing. But nonetheless, we felt like we wanted to come to city council or to the planning commission and get your input. And, and so we are doing so in this format and it's still a notice public meeting with potential for public comment and we're looking for your input and recommendations to council.
Okay. Actually, I believe that it's changes to municipal code that we are supposed to review in a hearing. Isn't that, isn't that correct?
I'd have to look to see what sections here.
I think I actually have. I think I have that.
So.
I guess it would be good, it would be good to confirm it.
Yeah, we can confirm it. I think at this point, it might be a, a matter of semantics where we are, you know, holding a public meeting to consider the input from the public and the council and, and our intent is to, is to do that, whether it's called a study session or a hearing.
Okay. So I, I guess, I guess that would be one of the areas that would just, you know, I guess I'm trying to think of areas that change in the municipal code where we don't have a hearing here. And that's, perhaps that's possible. I don't know. I guess. Look, under two three two oh seven oh, it's within our purview to do so. So we, we can take that or we can bring it from staff as part of our agenda. So, I mean, it's, it's part of the municipal code there. Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Saxena?
No.
I do, I have a bunch of questions actually, but not too many. One, so do we have a definition for contiguous parkland in here at all? As to like the minimum size of what can be donated as parkland? I'm glad that we're now on a ground level here. I think I was wanting to list, list things here in terms of what happens, but like, like if I gave you like half of that section and half of a section over here and half a section over here, is that a, is that park, can I consider that parkland if it's really just like that stuff in between the sidewalks?
We do not have any definitions for contiguous parkland or, or any of those items. The reason being is every site's a little bit different. Some sites, it may be appropriate to have a smaller park and other areas, it may be appropriate to have two separate parks in different parts of a development. It really comes down to the site and, and reviewing it. And, you know, at this point in time, there's additional factors that need to be considered with respect to trying to lay out certain requirements. We could potentially pigeonhole ourselves into a, a set of rules that just don't work for certain sites, even though we really want to have a park at that location. So it just needs more thought and consideration before we go down that, that road.
Okay.
But I would add that there is minimum size requirements in the extent that the formulas calculate how much land must be dedicated. And you, and you need to satisfy that requirement either through dedication of land or payment of lieu, in lieu fees or both. And so there is minimum size requirements, but not necessarily how it's configured.
Okay. Can we consider that there's some level of, I mean, a minimum size to look at it? Say if it's not feasible, it's feasible, totally understand that. Don't want to be constraining on the policy side. But part of it is I, I wouldn't want to have a situation where that, you know, something has, is declared a park is really not a park. It's really just like a strip, so, or sidewalk strip. So I, I'll say this before, like I truly before was a free market capitalist and property rights person. I've seen how badly these rules can be abused. I'm just trying to figure out, just to make sure that at least we have a minimum dedication of, of what's correct on the park side, of what a parkland is. The other question I have is really in lieu payments. It's fair market value, is that kind of how it's determined? Does it say exactly how we determine that fair market value for in lieu payments?
Yes, it does.
I'm going back to the calculation as well here in terms of the...
But basically, on an annual basis, the city hires an appraiser to appraise land throughout the, throughout the city and from those appraisals, we verify what the fair market value of land is and we establish that as a fair market value of land for that year. And that's what the fee is based on.
Okay.
So, so that's a citywide appraisal value?
Correct.
What is that currently?
I think it's at ten million an acre right now.
Ten million acre, okay. And then the other question is, when we have, like I said, residential communities that might have an, not in this case, not that we have these, but might have an HOA where they have their own recreational center, is that counted towards parkland if it's not available to the public? How we define that here?
My understanding, if it's not available to the public, it's not counted as public parkland. It may be private open space, but not as public.
Okay, just want to make sure, that's in this, I think it was in here, it was listed that way.
Fifty percent, is that correct? That there's a credit for fifty percent for non-publicly available recreational and park space?
That is correct.
Toward their, toward their dedication.
Correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Feng, you're explaining. Can we make that, make a suggestion that that be counted as twenty-five percent because it's not available to the rest of the public?
We can take that suggestion and look at it.
Thank you. That's it, I'm out.
Okay, so you touched on this in the report and this was a kind of glaring one to me. I'd like to discuss the, the proposed text that was before us looks to remove the, the density formula. And I would, I'd like to talk a little about that. One of the things I would expect we would see if we were, if we were having a full hearing, and I believe this actually mentioned in, in there somewhere, to look at the practice of, you know, our peer neighborhoods. So the current, the current policy includes a density calculation where multifamily units are calculated at a different rate than the number that's being imposed, the citywide rate that's being imposed in this version. So I'm just curious about understanding the justification for that.
And the justification for what, modifying to an average household size based on the federal census bureau or the density table?
Well, the removal of density table.
So we were considering going with the federal census bureau because that somewhat lines with what the Quimby Act allows. Within, within the state guidelines, it states that, you know, that cities may be able to use federal census bureau data to establish those, those parkland dedication fees. There are other cities in South Bay that have done that. I believe Santa Clara is one of them. And so this is not a new step. With that stated, Sunnyvale, I know, still has the same density formula that we have here. We were looking to, to shift over to the, the federal census bureau data because it stays more up to date. You know, they do it every ten years and then they typically go in and will update that even midterms through those, through those ten year census states. Additionally, though, we are looking to offset, or I should say, put off that modification at this point in time. Like I said, we, we want to potentially do some further studying and, and verify what we actually have for, you know, house, a number of people per household in the city.
I think pulling together some of that additional information you're looking for as far as what other jurisdictions will be doing, it's part of that further study.
Right. So actually, I looked informally, I didn't look at Santa Clara, but I think the only place that I could see that in our neighbor, in our neighboring cities who doesn't have a density formula is Saratoga. Even Los Altos had a ratio, I suspect they have more, they have probably more multifamily housing in Saratoga than they do in, in Los Altos and they have, they have such a ratio. So my concern there is that, well, so, so one of my comments was that we should definitely include a survey of the cities and to make it very, to make that, make that visible as part of the decision process. This is probably of all the pieces of information you might have to research, it's probably the easiest one to get because everybody has a calculation for the formula. You know, I, I find this to be an extremely aggressive move. You know, it's a fee problem here. Generally, basing, basing fees on units is repeatedly identified as a problem area in terms of, of, you know, what it does is it has the effect of disfavoring building smaller units. And so, so I actually just worked out some of the numbers here. But, but I think the, the first way you illustrated is to say that, you know, if you build a five hundred square foot apartment or a six thousand square foot home, they would actually be charged at the same rate under the plan that's, that's in this proposal. Now, you could probably make an argument, you know, maybe the situation in the city is such that, you know, you have two people living in a five hundred, you know, in a one bedroom apartment and two people living in a six thousand square foot home. But that's generally, I think that that's generally not going to be the case. So I think that that would, you know, what this does is it's a, this, this particular change becomes a pretty serious detriment, considering building more affordable homes instead of building smaller homes. And it also, you know, as, as we've heard in the past, some people do complain that large homes have many, many people living in them. So greater impact, those things are all very difficult to determine, but, you know, I think that this definitely makes a bad problem much, much worse. I actually find it kind of ironic. The number of the council members have been very vocal saying that the school districts, which of course, you know, they're just, they're just giving advice here, the school district should go to a parcel tax assessment, which is based on square feet rather than units. And, and then it's, it's funny that at the same time, this is starting to come through where it's exactly the reverse. This, we had a model, which was where the density was, was, you know, at least loosely tied to the size of units. And this goes to a model where it's completely reversed. This is actually, there's been a series of reports from the Turner Center at Berkeley. It's an urban planning institute at Berkeley. And this is actually, they recently did a report in August of 2019 about impact fees. I attended a SPUR talk just a week and a half ago with the author of that paper, who was there talking about the, the challenges of impact fees, right? And this is actually one of these, this is one of the areas where if you want to incentivize building homes, we even have, we even have a claim in this, in this, in this proposal that we want to favor having a mix of homes, but that's exactly the opposite effect that you have when you, when you have a per unit only model. Just to give you an idea also, I also just wanted to, to comment, this is somewhat Quimby Act based. The Quimby Act is, represents the legal maximum fees that can be charged. So, I mean, I think people, people often look at that. I should have asked this in the last, in the last topic. Do you know what our current parkland ratio is? I believe it's like two point nine, right? Two point nine acres?
I don't know off the top of my head. I know it's under three.
Yeah, it, but it's just barely under three. I think, I think it's very close. Traditionally, I was on Parks and Rec for a long time. We often talked about that. There was, there was a shortage. It's, it's not evenly graded across, across the city. But one of the things I think, you know, when, in the discussion of the Quimby Act, it, it sounds like a great goal. It is in fact a limit. It is a hard limit on how much impact fee you can charge. So one of the things, one of the things you'll hear in the Turner Center discussion around this is that, you know, in a time when we have declared, where the state has declared a crisis on housing and a, and a crisis of affordability, that charging maximum, you know, you need to, you need to be thoughtful about whether you want to charge maximum fees. So those are what the Quimby, the Quimby fees represent. What we aren't doing is we aren't doing a nexus study. You know, and, and actually determining, you know, where we want to be relative, relative to our, our peer communities. Now, of course, that's always what your objective is. One of the highlighted groups in the Turner, Turner Center study is Fremont, who has a very high parkland dedication fee. In fact, if you build either a single family home or a multifamily home, probably seventy five percent of their fees are parkland fees. They're pretty neutral in talking about what the effect is, but I don't think that anybody would look at that as a positive thing. And in fact, the fees here, we can actually make the determination, you know, if I use the 2010 census, of course, 2020 census will be different. Fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and two is a population, twenty-one thousand, twenty-seven housing units. So that's two point eight persons per household, which happens to be the ratio that we're using in the current, in the current parkland dedication formula. At two point eight persons per household, that's three hundred and fifty-seven dwelling units for a thousand people, the size for three acres. So you have to ask the question then, do you think three hundred and fifty-seven one bedroom apartments will have a thousand residents versus three hundred and fifty-seven single family homes? It seems very unlikely. And then if you actually take those numbers out, I use the, in the Valco specific plan, there was a financial analysis done last year, so, you know, fourteen months ago. At that time, they used the, the value of a nine point two million per acre for the land value in town. So... So what this, if we were to do this, you know, enact this proposal today, the, the parkland impact fee would be 25,760 per unit. And that's quite a bit higher than 16,700 under the current formula. So, you know, I think we also, we have another agenda item that we probably won't get to tonight about, about P zones. You know, in that item, we recognize that multifamily development is really the future. You know, infill development is what's going to happen here. Multifamily development and higher density is going to happen. So this really, as, as a policy, this is extremely, extremely negative to making that happen. And, and, you know, I think one of the things that, there's an unintentional consequence that comes with, with setting the fees wrong. We actually saw that, I mean, you know, because we did do a financial feasibility study. You know, there's a feasibility study right now for the affordability rate, the linkage fee. And that, that has a bunch of interesting, you know, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't watch the council's review of that, but the fact, the fact that the feasibility study shows that the current, you know, the current inclusion rate at 15% is actually driving multi, you know, is driving apartments into, you know, those, they are not feasible under our current model. Retail is not feasible under any model. So I, I would just be very careful about increasing these to this big numbers because what happens is it doesn't cause you to get more parkland. It will cause you to get less when projects don't get built. And, and the areas that, you know, have a shortage, they will get an even greater shortage in the future because they are the least, they will be the hardest ones to justify construction at. So, you know, at the, at the bottom of, at the, at the end of the day here, impact fees, they're a very, very powerful tool for incentivizing or disincentivizing development. And, you know, I think this is a, this is unfortunately one that would really, really be negative. And, you know, whether that is intentional or not, you know, that's, that's for, that's for, for, you know, for, for, for more debate, but I, I think that it's really, I can't help but think that we're rushing toward this because, you know, because of legislation that comes into play on, on January 1st. And this looks like something that, you know, if you try to, if you try to, try to approve this policy on January 2nd, I suspect it wouldn't be legal.
So looking at the Turner study from 2017, I think it's very important to understand that the seven cities that were looked at were LA, Sacramento, Roseville, Oakland, Irvine, and Fremont. Irvine, Fremont being power suburbs similar to Cupertino. What's important here is really not to understand the individual impact fees on parks, is really to consider what the overall impact fees are. If you look at Fremont, their impact fees are high, 158,000 for the impact fees. Irvine is sitting at about 140,000, and Roseville is sitting at about 40,000. It's important. We have the same chart. Yeah, put it up. So the main thing is really about thinking about the overall cost of impact fees. I don't think that having the density table or not the density table is going to change that, given our composition of density. So, so I think I would take a counterpoint of view here. You can take a look. Commissioner Feng just put that same graphic that we're both looking at, right? But if you look at this, I mean, you know, I, you know, you have to compare like-like cities, and you also have to consider power regions, and you also think about the types of communities and the neighborhoods and the average cost of a home per square feet. That's all.
Could you share the graph?
Can we show the graphic that's on the email? Or email? Sorry. Email? There we go. That's the graphic from the Turner study, which we are talking about here. So, but I, I think it's important, but you can look at it that way. All I'm saying is that I, I disagree with Commissioner Feng here wholeheartedly, as much passionately as he has. I think that when you look at having a density table and look at units, you don't get to the dramatic effect that we're talking about, given the number of new builds that are here, and, and given the changes in density that's going to occur over the next five to 10 years that the city wants.
So just as a point from the, just as a point, to understand this, this graph, the yellow bar that you see there is part, park impact fee is charged by different cities.
I think it's orange, I believe. Schools is yellow, if I remember.
No. Parks are the yellow one.
We have different versions of yellow, I guess, in terms of what we're looking at. Sorry. I think you have a different one than what's on the website. Apologies.
You're looking at a different chart than I'm looking at.
We're both looking at different charts. It's okay. Anyways, for a fact, we both have different points of view, and we're both passionate about it. Let's move on. Anything else? Any other questions before we get to the public?
Yeah, I guess I have one question. How much would the, like, for, say, a one-bedroom apartment which is built, how much would the actual fee be? Like, given the data we have right?
Are you asking about the existing fee?
Another proposal.
Let me ask that question a little bit differently for you. Fees per multifamily unit may look different than fees per single-family home in these calculations?
No.
So for what you're doing?
No.
It's not the same, right?
They're applying the same density across all, all units. So, you know, by unit. The numbers I calculated, I mean, we can, we can walk through those, those numbers again, but this proposal, using the current census numbers, would be 25,760 per unit.
25,000.
Regardless of size.
No, but if you look in aggregate what it would be for a multifamily unit and then look at the density of it, when you look at it aggregate as the total building versus, you know, per acre, you'll, you'll have a very different number per acre, so.
And now, Commissioner Feng, do you really feel, I mean, to me, that's like maybe 3% to 5% of the overall cost of what an apartment would look like in this area. Do you feel that that's going to be stopping people from building? And also whether, and if he, if it is lower, whether the city can actually even acquire more land to actually get the parks needed to support the population and the quality of life we want to give to them?
So...
And I presume the BMR and senior units don't come into this?
We should confirm that as well.
The city's general, the housing element has a policy to continue, for the city to continue granting waivers for park dedication fees, and that's implemented through the city's BMR program procedures manual. And so that was going to be continued as well.
That's something, actually, I think that's one of the things where, this is one of the items that I brought up during our marathon, general plan issues. I don't think that's actually very clear. What it is, is that the city, the council had discretion to charge the fees or not charge the fees.
Yeah, but it's not compulsory.
But, but I think that, one of the things that's interesting again in this proposal, it seemed like the council was, was intending to change the ordinance such that they had, they had less discretion about the waiver of fees.
That wasn't the intent.
Okay.
I mean, I think what we have to do is balance the need, balance the ability of the city to actually acquire parkland with the burden it will foot on a builder. And, you know, given the, the current cost of a condo or something in the Bay Area, I don't think 2%, 3% fee is going to be an unreasonable burden on any builder. So that's my view, and that's based on, say, we pay 25K for a million-dollar condo or an apartment, that's probably reasonable and actually will generate the funds which the city needs to buy the land, which will compensate. So that's my view. But I don't think that 2%, 3% is going to make or break any apartment community here.
I think it's a study session, so let's ask questions for things we might not have an answer to, and, and I think we'll keep our opinions in different ways, but if there's something strongly that you want to express to staff, please let them know your point of view as well. I'm pretty much...
Yes. I would also just, I would also point to, again, as we look at our community, our neighboring cities, you'll see that they've done extensive work on this in San Jose over the last two years because they suffer, they, they, they have suffered from a, a problem of, of, you know, high costs make construction unfeasible, of which, of which impact fees are only just a part, admittedly only a part. I mean, I think it's, it's actually somewhere on the order of about 20 or 25%. I think it's around 20% for the overall cost of construction. And then there's an issue as well because those fees are actually due at the time of...
Half. I think it's half.
Well, no, in San Jose, they're actually, I believe they're all due upfront.
San Jose is due upfront for us, it's half, isn't it?
I don't know. You know...
But, but I think it's important, like, it's important that these studies don't take into account, like Irvine, Fremont are powers, power school districts and suburbs, so their land value is based on their school district's performance, whereas LA, Sacramento, Roseville, and Oakland, that the other four cities in this study have a very different profile.
Well...
Which is why they're...
What they're, what they're actually pointing out there is that cities focus on different things in their, in their objectives, right? So, so in particular, Fremont has very, very high parkland dedication fees, strangely about the level that we're talking about for Cupertino here, but they actually, they actually are a, a community that has the five acre per thousand. So there, that's why their, their fees are very, very high. Other cities will, would focus instead on, you know, transportation fees, you know, different, different, different areas. So different, different cities put their, put the emphasis in different places.
Well, regardless of say, it was a very interesting study.
Right. And, and I think that, you know, you could certainly say if the highest priority for Cupertino were parkland, then, you know, yeah, that can justify a higher fee. I just, I would just question whether or not that particular scaling, the particular scaling that, that, that this proposal makes is that small units pay much, much higher fee, 50% higher than they do currently. Large homes would pay less. If you create, if you use the incentive, if you create the fee structure in that way, you know, people will follow that, and you will, you will see not small units.
But the counterlogic to what you're saying is you're making an assumption that the large homes, which are aging, which have actually less people in those homes, actually in many cases, your 2,000, 4,000 square-foot homes are empty nesters today. So it's, there's no fair approach here than other thinking about by population, but we can argue that later when we come to that kind of resolution.
You do it by square feet?
That's not necessarily fair either. So I think we're going to have different, we're going to have different definitions of equity and fairness here.
Yeah. So I would just say that particularly for, particularly for our council that's, that's advocated for that over and over again, that it would be, that would certainly be something that ought to be looked at.
We have differing views from two of us. Please take those into consideration.
Yeah, I agree. And I think this item is, is now sort of a phase-two further study item, and so this is helpful to hear about what things you think we should consider in that further study.
Any questions from the public? Let's open it up to the public. For those four members, three members that are still here, appreciate you being here. We got Lisa Warren, followed by Peggy Griffin, and you're jumping into, Jennifer Griffin as well.
Oh, there it is.
It's not worth staying unless you get to talk again.
Should we offer popcorn?
No, thanks. Okay, so this is going to be all over the place, but Chair Wong mentioned an HOA example of a private park within an HOA community. And it's currently 50% credit. You're asking to change that to 25? I would carry that over to office parks and commercial properties unless that's already being taken care of and I just don't, unaware of it. I mean, Apple Campus 2 has this gorgeous, beautiful parkland that no one can go on.
Is that counted?
I don't know.
Is Apple Park counted in our parklands?
I don't...
You're just asking staff? Okay. Okay.
But was there some 50% credit for their parkland fees?
The Apple Campus project is a commercial or office space project. They're not subject to...
Any of this?
Parkland...
They don't, shouldn't have any, right? Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that was just a question. Now, the, the vice mayor and possibly Councilman Willie specifically has been asked for a map of some kind, or some kind of document that would show existing resident density, where it actually is and where the parkland is. This goes to the inequity of east, west, south, north, up, down, you know, whatever you want to call it, various spaces in the city, because it's typically been the lower populated, the lower, the dense, lower density areas have...
More parkland.
More parkland.
Yes.
And that's really not how it's supposed to be. You can't just take the whole enchilada and say, okay, we need three acres per thousand residents and put it wherever you want. It should be spread out evenly. And that map, I don't know if it's ever been produced, but I know it's been asked for multiple times, and I would like to see it. And that would just be current, what we currently have. It doesn't even encompass what is coming down the pipe with housing bills and where all that density is going to be thrown, where it's available. Where is land even available? And to that point, Fremont has more available land and less expensive land. So the fact that they're, they're gathering more money for five acres per, I think that kind of is backwards. We should be getting even more, I think. But another, and I think this is the last question, what about what ADUs are going to do to this whole mess? Because the whole idea is to reduce their fees, for whatever reason. They don't have park dedication fees, but they're adding to the density. I think it is your responsibility to protect the city from this stuff happening as much as you can. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Peggy Griffin?
Hello again. I sent a copy of this, so I'm going to kind of blow through it because I know I don't have enough time for all of it. I'm going from the beginning to the end. The first one, I'm concerned about this, using the census data. That means that nine years, every nine years of it will always be old data. I don't know what you use now, but it makes me feel uncomfortable. Average household size is different in different areas. Where do you get this number? Because it's different in Iowa than it is here. So it should specify where you're going to get that number. And example calculations like Commissioner Feng did would be very helpful to see current way you do it and what you're proposing as changes. In this section applicability, the city has the discretion to determine which option shall be required, but I thought there was discussion that you would require it in areas where the parkland was not up to the city's standards. So I'm hearing both conflicts there. Sorry. The parkland dedication calculation, if you're going to use average household size times number of dwelling units, put them together just for readability. You've got the park acreage standard stuck in the middle of it. So I would just move, just switch the, for readability and understanding. And in the parkland dedication, you said setbacks and all this stuff isn't included. Add restaurant patio space so that they can't just ooze into the parkland. In fees of lieu, in fees in lieu of parkland dedication, you've got, you added, and both the developer and the city agree to the dedication. Why? I, I, you're just making it easier for them to weasel out. I don't understand why we need this. If the owner objects to the fair market value, they can go get another estimate. It just seems like you should stick to all of it to be consistent with all your developers. Here, this is Main Street. At the time of the building permit issuance or recordation, the final subdivision, whichever is the earliest, I think that it needs to be reviewed by the city attorney and recorded. In the case of Main Street, a planner signed a temporary occupancy with a D, a covenant that was not valid, and it went against that planner's email. So it wasn't obviously looked at by the city attorney. And there's got to be proof of it being recorded before you issue that thing. Anywhere you say prior to occupancy, you should say prior to any occupancy so that there's no temporary occupancy sticking in there. Requirements here, the provisions, subdivisions containing less than five parcels and not used for residential purposes. I don't understand why the five parcels, there's no size. Those could be really big parcels if they're on the west side of town. And what kind of subdivisions would this refer to? I don't know. Again, put, it says at the time of the filing, that's really vague. Prior to filing, so that they can show proof, is a little bit tighter. And be consistent. There are several places where, one place you say prior, another place you say at the time. time. And again, I'm repeating myself, anywhere you say prior to occupancy, put prior to any. Thank you.
Thank you. For clarification, if I remember, isn't a parcel 40 acres of land? Or is this just, the way we look at parcels is just a piece of plot of land? Just want to make sure. I always get those mixed up.
What was that question again?
Parcel is 40 acres, right? Or are we talking just parcel?
A parcel is a piece of property.
A piece of property.
If you're talking about an acre, an acre is 43,560 square feet.
Okay, I always thought a parcel was 40 acres, but, okay. Welcome.
Hello. The good stuff is always good for waiting for. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I live in an area that is very park deficit. And our parkland, actually for my neighborhood, is now currently occupied by Shadow Oaks and Sage Apartments, formerly the Fountains. Those were the parks for Ranch Rinconada in 1950, but something happened and now they're part of San Jose and we have no parks. Anyway, I really appreciate the part where you guys are talking about that parks will be on the ground. I don't want anything bizarre where we have city parks that are up on tops of buildings, on tops of roofs, on tops of trees. You know, I'm a firm believer and tera ferva that parks in cities, especially like Cupertino, need to be on the ground. And the parks need to be owned by the city. I don't want any more of this, the city has rights to use the property and it's maintained by the property owner. I think in future, we need to make sure that every park in the city that comes up, that is created out of building projects, et cetera, is dated and recorded as property of the city and it is immediately zoned as parkland. I don't want any of our precious land being declared surplus and the state getting their hands on it from this Casa Compaq bills where they've made up this fake organization that can take away land, that is, that somehow gets declared surplus from cities and the state can take it and do whatever they want to. Any of this land from now on that has become parkland, the city owns it, it's dated and it's immediately zoned as parkland forever and ever and ever in the history of Cupertino. I foresee horrible atrocities happening with land use at the local level being handled by Sacramento. I don't even want to go there. That is so totalitarian that I can't even imagine the future that Sacramento wants us to live under. Then again, any land that we can get for the city is precious. I don't care where it is, we are so park deficit in every part. San Jose just preserved 1,000 acres in the Coyote Valley, but are they, but what about Doradon? There's no parks there. That's going to be solid, dense New York land. SB 35, SB 330, AB 68 and 69, and the specter of SB 50 are going to be tripling the number of people in our city, and we don't have enough parkland for the people who are here. We need to get more parkland. I don't care how you do it, get it now, buy it, date it to the city, and zone it ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Just random question, I don't know how this works on acquisitions of land and property, but do we have the ability, do we have like a land bank or a land fund today?
Excuse me?
Do we have like a provision in the budget for land acquisition or land?
We have a park dedication fee where we currently have money in there from other developments that have provided us in lieu fees, as well as some money from Apple when they came in and did their project. I think that fund has somewhere around eight to 11 million dollars in it.
And a question for the city attorney and our councillor here. Is there anything prohibiting us from requiring land dedication back to us if, for a park? Like when we actually set up something for zoning? Like we're, let's say, you know, there's four acre development, there's probably 10,000 square feet available, can there be a request to actually zone that back into the city? Like how would you do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that is part of this process where the city is, would be approving developments and determining whether the park, that basically the requirement to address park impacts or is it met through a dedication of land on the site or through, in lieu fees that the city can then use to buy property somewhere else. And so that land dedicated on site is usually, as we saw, protected by covenants at the time.
Okay. I was just thinking how far we can take this Quimby Act, that's all. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from?
Yeah, just to follow up on some of the things that came up in the speakers. I believe parkland dedication is now, for ADUs, has been changed under SB 13?
Yes, the impact fees that can be charged for ADUs has changed under a suite of laws, SB 13 is one of them. The new requirements as of January 1 are that ADUs that are smaller than 750 square feet in size are not eligible or will not be required to pay impact fees. For ADUs that are larger than that, impact fees can still be charged so long as they're proportional.
It's proportional to the size of the main house?
Yes, exactly, on a square footage basis. And I should note, we will be working on updating the city's ADU ordinance to comply with those laws.
Okay. And then, there was a question about, you know, how the determination that happened in the census. If I, I believe that the way the census works is that there is both a count and a dwelling unit count, which is how the density calculation would be done. Is that correct?
So the Federal Census Bureau does break down, you know, household size is based on cities. There is a, I think it's 2.91 is the average household size for the city of Cupertino, for this Federal Census Bureau. It does not necessarily, I was not able to find out any further breakdown for how, for single family units or multifamily units or anything like that.
Yeah, I haven't, I've never seen that. They definitely, the, both the 10-year census and then the follow-up, they call it the American?
Community survey.
American Community Survey, that's right. Will typically track the number of residents and the number of dwelling units, but they don't, they don't make a determination about, you know, which ones are multi-family versus single family. Let's see. I thought there was, I had one of their, but. Oh, here's the 151st largest city in America, Cupertino. Yeah, I guess, I would just, I would just, again, I would say that in trying to, if, I think that it would be a mistake to move away from having a density factor, just because that has been a standard practice in the past. And if you're going to, if there are challenges, if you feel that that doesn't reflect, that doesn't reflect population correctly, then there may be better ways to do it than trying to go to a single calculation that tries to encompasses all styles of housing, you know, all, you know, the entire geography. It just doesn't seem like that would lead to a very just outcome. And, you know, and people complain about, you know, the per-unit, per-unit assessments, you know, are often a, you know, an issue in terms of, you know, this could have been done in a better way. It may be the most expedient way, but it, but it's, it lacks in fairness. And then I would.
How does it lack in fairness?
It lacks in fairness because, let's see, I want to say this. It lacks in fairness because it is basically a, the impact fee, I don't want to say this, the nexus of the impact is the number of people that you will bring into town if you create a new, if you use, this Quimby Act, Quimby Act stands separately from the things that we do, you know, nexus study for. But if you apply the same kind of thinking, the, the size of the fee that's assessed is supposed to be reflective of the impact of that new development. And if you do it on a per-unit basis, that becomes a high penalty. It over, it overcounts the number of people that can live in smaller units.
Interesting.
Yeah, and I would, and, you know, and then again, maybe falling from that as well. I think that before making a change, I would highly recommend trying to do a financial feasibility study to understand. I mean, you know, the immediate, the immediate effect you'll see here is that trying to build multifamily dwellings will become much, much more expensive here in Cupertino. You shouldn't expect that Sunnyvale or, you know, or Mountain View or even Los Altos, they're not going to, they're not changing their plans, so you'll definitely create a differential that is unfavorable to the production of housing here. So, you know, everybody's priority is different. You know, it's up to the city to make a decision about how they want to prioritize and how they want to assess impact fees. But I think that this one, this is, this is just not, it's not a good implementation.
Well, I would say as the city leaders, we need to balance our ability to provide the services also which people expect when they come to a city. And just doing some rough math, so if we're looking at 25,000 per unit and if it's 10 million per acre, we're talking about 400 units to get an acre of land. So.
357.
Yeah.
If they're using the calculation.
Yeah, so we're looking at a pretty large number of units for a single acre of parkland. And to me, that sounds just the bare minimum what the city needs to do to provide a basic lifestyle which people expect in a suburban community like ours. So we can slice and dice it in different ways, but given the nature of construction which we expect to come in our city, I think it's fairly reasonable. And as long as we have the ability to exclude BMR and senior housing, we are much more price sensitive, I think, given the price points which the homes command out here, I don't see that as a major burden. It just enables the city to at least have a fighting chance of providing a basic, like one acre per like 300, 400 homes in the city, which I think is something anybody with a small family or anybody would want.
Yes, except that the impact is supposed, is intended to be based on the people that you bring, not the number of homes that you bring. So the problem is that if you, if, if the model, if the model that we're using today is reflective of the real world, then the, you know, 357 homes is generating less than, you know, it's maybe 600 people. Those people are overpaying, and the result is that, you know, you end up not being able to build those homes. You could also take the argument that if somebody is building a 5,000 square foot home, you know, a home that costs 6 million bucks, then they really don't care about the 25,000. And they probably don't care about if it's 50,000.
But I think the number of 5,000 square foot homes is going to be much more smaller than the number of multifamily homes. So, and if we, if the goal is to have a fund to be able to provide those services, it should be funded to a point where they actually provide those services rather than funded for the sake of, sake of putting some tax because it just serves some purpose.
Commissioner Saxena, I think what you're saying is that the funding mechanism needs to deliver the desired outcome, not just for the sake of having a tax against that. And if the numbers don't work, the numbers may be higher, maybe lower, but based on projected density or projected number of units or projected population, whatever calculation you choose to use, the end desire is to make sure we have the right amount of parks per number of individuals who live here.
And as long as it doesn't put an undue burden, I mean, like, my sense is that this 2%, 3% fee per unit is not going to change any developer's calculation about where to build or not. And it just, it does enable the city to at least have a fighting chance of providing an acre for like 3, 400 homes which would come up there and the people who would live there.
Well, staff, you got a wide range of opinions to consider. Thank you very much for your time. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Are you guys okay with that?
Thank you for your input.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight. Welcome to the Late Show. You guys okay? Anyone need a break? Let's power through? Let's power through? All right. All right, what do we have next? Item number six, which Commissioner Moore has to recuse herself for, I believe. Do we bring her back to recuse herself? Is that how it works? I believe. I think that's the proper way to do that. Welcome back, Commissioner Moore. We're on subject number six, item of six, sorry. Cupertino Municipal Code Amendments, known as CMC, to specify development standards in the planned development zone district, which is chapter 19.80 in our municipal code, and the third addendum to the final EIR prepared for the general plan amendment, housing element update and associated rezoned project. What's the recommended action? Conduct the public hearing and recommend that city council, one, adopt an addendum to the final EIR, and two, approve the proposed municipal code amendments. Per the draft resolution, supposed to be a hearing date on December 3, 2019. Commissioner Moore, what do you have?
I would like to make a brief statement before the Planning Commission proceeds to item six. Agenda item six is a public hearing regarding development standards in planned zoning districts. Additionally, there is an addendum to the general plan EIR because there is a nexus between these topics and the Valco SB 35 project. And as most people here are aware, I am one of four petitioners in a lawsuit currently pending in court relating to the Valco SB 35 application. Based on my involvement in that lawsuit, I am, out of an abundance of caution and to avoid any potential appearance of impropriety, recusing myself from deliberations and any commission recommendation on agenda item six. Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you back here after this agenda item's over. So, staff, what do we have for the staff report?
Good evening, Planning Commission. We're talking about an application to make municipal code amendments to chapter 19.80 of the municipal code, which particularly pertains to planned development zoning districts, the ones that have a P preceding the zoning designations. Just as background, this item, which is the clarification of objective standards in the general plan and municipal code, is part of the fiscal year 2019, 2020 City Council Work Program. Over the summer of 2019, Planning Commission and City Council discussed various areas that were identified by staff in the city attorney's office. Plus, there were additional comments and topics, areas of clarification requested from the public, which were provided by council members, planning commissioners, and the public, which were discussed at both Planning Commission and the City Council. There were a couple of study sessions with the council with regard to that project, and on October 1 of this year, the council directed that staff could commence with clarifications with the phase one items that were identified in the summer series that you all saw as well. The items that were identified were some clarifications through the community form diagrams, including some text amendments to the heart of the city text box and building plane footnotes, and also a general plan amendment to cross-reference policies related to the heart of the city sub-areas. Those two items do require additional study and review and additional tribal consultation requirements, so those will be brought back at a future time. But this item, clarification of development standards in P zoning districts, was also identified as an area that could do with further clarification. Just as background, P zoning districts are essentially for planned development. That is the zoning designation, and then there's a reference zoning on the zoning map that in essence dictates the permitted and conditional uses that could be developed on that particular property. Well, how would one rezone to a P zoning district, you might ask? You have to have a conceptual development plan or some other zoning plan in order to have the overall general standards for that particular P zoning district implemented. And then underneath that, you have what is called a definitive plan, which is when an applicant or one property owner within that entire zoning district comes in to develop their property and then the specific standards. and then the specific standards that are applicable to that development are identified in the development plan, in the definitive plan. So, the general plan in essence anticipates that most future development within the city would be mixed-use multifamily developments, and they're kind of supported by several policies and strategies within the general plan land use element. I've listed a few here, and I'm happy to read the text to you, but in general, it talks about intensifying higher uses, uses along half a mile of our mixed-use special areas. And then it talks about mixed-use villages, how those need to have active and other uses at the ground level and could have other uses, residential uses primarily above it. And then also that all of this development needs to happen on a mixed-use village concept, which would encourage a certain mix of uses to allow active uses to be part of that project. In general, the proposed amendments do not make any changes for any non-residential projects. The development standards for those projects do have, continue to have to be established via the adoption of conceptual and definitive plans. For residential and mixed-use residential projects, the changes incorporate that the project, any project within zoning districts that allow such uses, may develop without adoption of a definitive plan. However, they must meet existing standards in adopted specific plans or other zoning plans, and that they must meet multifamily zoning standards and any standards in the other reference zoning designations. For example, if you are developing a mixed-use project on property that is zoned PCG res, the residential portions of that project would have to meet the multifamily zoning standards, and the general commercial portions would have to meet the CG standards. However, if those standards conflict, then the most restrictive standard would apply to that particular development.
And that includes setbacks, heights.
Correct.
Ratios, density.
So the heights are already dictated by the general plan. This is really setbacks and open space requirements and other things that come with zoning as its package.
Okay, and when we say restrictive, we mean, what does restrictive imply?
So if, for example, and I'm just throwing numbers out here, they may not be in the zoning.
Hypothetical, hypothetical numbers?
Right, very hypothetical numbers. Let's say the R3 standard is that you have to have a 45-foot rear setback, but the CG standard is a 20-foot rear setback, then the 45-foot zoning setback would be applicable.
Crazy question. We do define restrictive somewhere as well? I think that's where you were headed.
Yeah, that's my point. I think the term, some I don't like the use of the term restrictive.
Okay.
And I was just curious if that's a standard accepted terminology in your business, or it's something?
It is. It is used in other zoning documents as well. However, we can certainly take that feedback back.
Restrictive meaning the lower height, the greater setback.
Exactly. The one that allows less development in essence.
Let's not call it that way, but yes.
That is an industry standard.
Okay, thank you.
You find that in other jurisdictions, municipal codes as well.
Again, the proposed amendments do still allow applicants to propose definitive plans to be approved by the city if desired. This, in essence, the amendments being proposed are to make sure there's some basic standards that allow properties to develop within the P zoning districts. In essence, there are no changes to the allowed uses to the properties that are being, that this municipal code amendment impacts. It just clarifies the development standards that are applicable to those properties. And in addition, there's some very minor clarifications and corrections, typographical stuff that is also part of that, of the proposed ordinance tonight, proposed resolution. So, with that, staff concludes its presentation and recommends that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution as presented to you.
Thank you. Let's see, questions from commissioners? Commissioner Feng, go ahead.
So I'd like to ask about the public outreach that was done for this agenda item.
My understanding is that the planning commission had three study sessions on the objective standards item, which included identifying this as a point of clarification. In addition, the city council has had at least two study sessions on the objective standards item as well. In addition to that, we have done our normal noticing that is required per the government code and the city's municipal code as well.
Okay, so just, just for the record, this did appear in the Mercury News. A notice for this meeting did appear in the Mercury News on November 1st and did not appear in the Cupertino Courier. A little unusual. Also, the, we have a normal time when we send out, when we send out the packet notice. I'm curious if you could tell me what, what the standard is for that.
Certainly, the Brown Act requires publication of the agenda and packet material 72 hours before a meeting, a regular meeting. Our standard has been to publish the packet five days prior to a meeting. However, there were, this agenda was pretty large, and there were, there was a lot of review that was required, and therefore, as a result, some of the items were published ahead of, I believe, two of the items. But it did meet the Brown Act requirements.
Okay, so, so just as, just as a clarification, because I know this has come up before, 72 hours includes the weekend for this meeting? Okay.
It has always has, yes.
Yes, because I was going to comment that the normal time that the agenda is distributed for a planning commission meeting would be Thursday, you know, by the end of business. It was not for this one. It was a couple hours after that, out, you know, past, past our starting time. And then it was reissued again on Friday, late in the day on Friday. I'm curious about, was there outreach to landowners who live in P, P zones?
Not more than what was, what is required under the government code, no.
Okay. And then, again, just for the record, because P zones include many of the planned development, residential planned developments as well as commercial, that would be thousands of parcels in town.
To be clear, though, none of these changes impact anything non-residential, is that correct?
Correct, it does not impact any non-residential development.
So those landowners in those non-residential areas, even though they are informed and they're informed through, under the Brown Act requirements, they probably don't, I mean, it's not going to impact them, correct?
Correct, it also technically would not impact, our, this still allows business as usual to occur for properties, for residential and mixed-use residential properties that would go through the city's process, to have different standards than what is suggested for mixed-use or residential developments under this amendment. So it still continues to allow what is the city's process currently as well.
So there's a large P zone that would be, it's something we discussed here before. It would actually be kind of the North Deansa area. So this would be the western side of Deansa Boulevard. That would include Bandly, the Bandly campus of Apple, and then the homes that are behind that. So I'm curious, if I were, if I were a homeowner in that, in that P zone, which is a PCG res today, right, that, the area behind Target, kind of north of Target, would that person be able to, are you granting them R3 access, R3 zoning now?
So the, what is in the North Deansa special area, there are no prop, single-family homes in that particular area. But there are large parcels there that have non-residential uses on them within that area.
It's not actually a special area. If you look at the zoning map, there's a large pink, it's probably the largest pink zone in the city. It would be the area that's north of Target. It would include Valley Green.
Correct, then that is North Deansa. It is part of the North Deansa special area. All of that pink is. Everything west of Deansa is part of the North Deansa specific.
Okay.
Plan area.
So there are homes there that are R1 today, right?
No. Those, those.
I mean, well, I guess they are R1 in a P zone.
R1 in a P zone.
I don't believe there are any single-family homes in the area that we're discussing, and I do have a zoning map pulled up here.
We're looking online here at the Cupertino.org home, backslash show document, question ID equal 13535, if you want to follow along, so.
So the pink area right here.
Yeah.
There are no single-family homes there.
Oh, okay.
They're all non-residential.
Those are office buildings, right?
There are office buildings, correct.
Where would you like to go with that? Are you, are you done with your stream?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so for that, yeah.
Okay. For the record, at some point, I would like to have a conversation about the P zone process in general, but I'm glad that we are tightening up standards at the moment. I'd rather add that to the agenda item for another meeting, so, okay. My, my concern is really just the level of flexibility that's provided there and what may happen in a world of ministerial review, so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, I only wonder about existing, existing P zone, P zone parcels, whether they, whether there's an issue where something is happening differently there than has been, you know, something that exists today, is there something different? There are a number of, a number of areas which are cluster homes, R1C. Does this have an effect on them?
It should not because they already have their conceptual and definitive plans approved. So we're not intending to change that. It's only if you come in with new development that, that we'd have to review those.
Yeah, I mean, just for the public's edification, I mean, a lot of these P zones were really set up for planned development, housing element items, and places where we thought that we're going to see a certain level of development growth. I mean, and I, we are under the assumption that those have been allocated properly and, you know, but those are good questions, Commissioner Feng.
Yeah, no, I think that, you know, there's been, in the discussions we've had before, there've been questions that have come up about what exactly, what exactly is a P zone? And those, you know, I believe the answer is that those are areas that have had higher developmental intensity, mixed use and higher developmental intensity for residential.
And there are also areas where there is an interest in preserving open spaces, more open spaces, so that you can cluster development, not just under the standard R1 clusters.
What would be the example of that?
Of that, I think at the far west end of the city, if you keep going down Stevens Creek Boulevard, I think, I want to say it's Long Down Court, and those, there's a development before you hit the quarry, Lehigh, and there are two developments, both on the north and the south side of Stevens Creek Boulevard, which are townhome-type developments, or just, the parcels are limited to what the home, the footprint of the home itself. So then all of the areas are open otherwise. There's also some developments that have happened in the hills. At the end of Los Avenue, for example, there were some open spaces that they were required in that development. It's hillside, but they were allowed to redevelop under certain conditions, so.
The ones on the Los Altos border, I mean?
Yes, unincorporated county.
Unincorporated county, yeah, got it. Yep, makes sense. Okay, good. Wow. Any other questions? Otherwise, we will close out this portion. You good?
Yeah, I think so. I'm just, my only concern, my only concern is if there, you know, if there are effects, if there are effects on existing P zones, that that would have, that that may not have been anticipated in the EIR.
If, well, they already have conceptual and definitive plans approved. So if they do want to come in and amend those to the extent that these new regulations apply to that new development, that mean, I mean, the EIR is looking at future development. We're not changing those standards at this point, in terms of what's already existing on the ground. So if they come in, they would, they would have to be environmental review and, to make sure that there are no additional impacts under the general plan EIR.
So that change, a change, okay, so on Homestead, there's, I think it's called North Point Apartments. So that would be an R1C area.
Correct.
Those are owned units.
Correct.
So, if somebody owned a unit and wanted to, and wanted to redevelop their, their unit, I don't know, you know, perhaps that's subject to a homeowners association or some sort of common ground.
Correct.
So that's, that would be the thing, the only thing that prevents that, right?
I think Sarah might have something to add to that.
Well, and if there's already a conceptual development plan or definitive plan in place, the homeowner would have to comply with those requirements in there unless they seek to amend those in some other way. And, and that probably would be unlikely, frankly, for a single unit within a larger development.
So the, the fact that you, the fact, so one of the things, one of the things that's notable when you read the modification is that P zone, P zone projects that have a residential component don't require a conceptual plan to move forward. So you're saying if there is a conceptual or approved plan, then that, then that does not apply there?
If there is a plan already in place, then that applies. The question is if you have a P zone with residential, with a residential designator that does not have an existing conceptual plan or definitive plan, and the owner is coming forward wanting to develop, that's the situation that we're talking about. It's that limited, narrow, narrow section. I think that's, that actually applies to a relatively small number of properties within the city.
So those were probably, somebody received a P zone in the past but didn't develop it yet? Is that the?
Yes, I mean, for example, there are several parcels within the heart of the city that are zoned PCG res but have not developed with residential uses. For that property, they would have to comply with the heart of the city standards as, to begin with, and to the extent the heart of the city does not address certain standards, then they would look to the R3 zoning standards for what they, what's missing in the heart of the city. Those standards would apply, and then you would also look to CG to layer together.
And if they didn't have a housing element allocation already, then they would still be, would still have to seek a conditional use permit?
Not necessarily under new state law, is my understanding.
I mean, that, again, that would be my, you know, there's, I think there's a question there, you know, with, with SB 330, it would definitely, I don't think, it seems like you would not be able to require, you know, it would not, I don't want to say this, you can't apply a limit of condition. It was unclear to me, you know, at this point, at this point last year, I think after the new legislation came out, that we had had a, there was, there had been a city seminar on effects of, effects of the new laws. So it's not clear exactly, you know, what Cupertino has, has the unusual, unusual part of our housing element is that it has housing allocations, set, you know, housing element allocations that if you don't have one, then you have to get a, you know, you have to get a conditional approval and a general plan amendment. So, you know, there may be some effect or may not from SB 330, it's unclear to say, but this is, this would appear to be where that would, that kind of thing would come up.
Quite potentially, and we're still parsing out SB 330, so we're, we're still trying to figure out what the impacts are.
Okay.
AV person, AV question, can we get off the map and back to the points, just so everyone can see, that's all. I've been inspired by both Commissioner Saxena and Commissioner Feng in my next question, and I think it's great. I mean, I always learn something new here every day from my colleagues. Question here, so if a planned commercial zoning, PGC has a 30-foot height, and then the EIR might have a contradictory height, let's say like 90 feet or, you know, 20 feet, which one wins?
So the EIR does not dictate heights. The EIR only studies the impacts of what the general plan might allow.
So should we always go with the restrictive moment, if, back to Commissioner Saxena?
No, so the CG actually ordinance says that it's 30 feet unless a different height is allowed under the general plan or other specific plan.
And back to his point, it would require an amendment if you were trying to adjust those heights. Let's see, a mixed use.
Unless you're asking for a density bonus waiver or incentive, so, yeah, then if you're not asking for any of those, then yes, you would.
I'll take a hypothetical, hypothetical situation, like, let's say we take out a, like Marina, it's a mall, or take a commercial district, like a part of Apple, let's say decide to sell the building, but they want to do something, restrictive height is 30 feet, but for them to go bigger, and let's say there's something in an EIR that says, maybe you can go up to 80 or whatever, we'd still go with the 30. Hypothetical.
If the general plan says 30 feet for that particular property or that parcel?
We'd hold to the general plan.
That we would hold to the general plan, yes.
Okay, good. Just checking. Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Learned something from you guys. Okay, I, I'm gonna make a motion. Wait, we need public. We gotta get a public comment. Sorry, guys. You guys have been waiting. And fill out your cards, so it's there for the record. There's only two of you. Peggy, Jennifer, who wants to go first? Do we have cards in? I don't see any cards, that's why. So, oh Peggy, go first, and then Jennifer, I guess you'll fill out a card. Welcome. For those still following, late night, you get three minutes, get a blue card, you can talk about whatever you want on this agenda item, so, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner's staff. I want to thank the staff for going through and identifying stuff that can be done relatively quickly and getting it in, both Chad and, and Pew. I have two, well, questions about this. On the zoning, relative to Mr. Feng's, Commissioner Feng's question, in Seven Springs, there's a whole area that doesn't look like it's developed, but it's P rez. Does that now become PR3? No. And if, so I guess I would ask again with Seven Springs, if I had my house and I want to blow it away, can I get PR3 to rebuild? Anyway, that's a question that I hope could be answered. And are there any, any places currently in, in our city that will change as a result of this, just because they had P or whatever, that maybe people should be aware of? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Staff, any, any answers to that?
As a point of clarification, for Seven Springs particularly, it does not change the zoning on it. There are already general plan densities that are allocated for that particular entire development. There's already a conceptual plan and definitive, definitive plan that was adopted.
Conceptual definitive were done ages ago, right?
Correct, for that particular development. So if the property owner wished to come in and redevelop the, the remaining parcel, there's already certain parameters around that.
And the ZOAP been approved and?
Correct. And if those have to be changed, it would have to come in with a new conceptual plan or a new, so.
Thank you. Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. A little late for Planning Commission stuff, but that's okay. I just was looking over this, and, yeah, I had learned about plan development years ago when I first started coming here, because I didn't really understand what it was. And P, plan development is very important for the city. Just looking over this, I was a little bit worried about policy LU 1.1, land use and transportation, focus higher land use intensities and densities within one-half mile of public transportation and along major corridors. Are we talking about Stevens Creek Boulevard? This smacks of Scott Weiner's one-quarter mile up to the bus stop bill. I forgot what that was, if that was one, his from last year that got junked, or if it's 50, or if it's 35. He's had, you realize in Oregon, senators are only allowed to present one bill per year. Mr. Weiner would have exceeded that 50 million times over. I don't, this just sounds a little, makes me nervous that this is...
Who are you seeing this?
Pardon?
Who are you reading this from?
It was on the staff presentation.
Okay.
I don't know what this is, but it makes me a little nervous, because it smacks of the new housing bills. And for the record, I am not proposing that we leap forward into changing any of our city code to abide by SB 330. To me, it is unconstitutional. I do not recognize SB 330, SB 35, and SB 50. I think they all need to be recalled immediately. They are against California law and state law and constitutional law. So let's, don't, let's, don't let them take advantage of us. Let's wait. We don't know what's going to happen. Oregon is a sitting example. There may be resistance to HB, to HB 2001. It's already beginning. I don't want Cupertino to walk willingly into something like these unconstitutional housing bills. So let's, don't change our code. Why should we? No one is forcing us to do it. There are, I believe, 250 cities in California. Many of them were against these housing bills from the beginning. We don't know who started the CASA compact. It seems to be nationwide, but I don't recognize it. So I do not recognize the validity of SB 330. So let's, don't do it until we find out more. Yes, let's talk about this issue of why we're promoting density along Stevens Creek Boulevard. I live within one-half mile of Stevens Creek Boulevard. I'm not looking to have any more density there, and I do not recognize the constitutionality of SB 330, regardless of what the state thinks. Thank you.
For the record, there's 482 municipalities in the state of California, so, okay. Any other comments here on the team?
None for me.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adopt an addendum to the final EIR and approve the proposed municipal code amendments per the draft resolution?
I propose.
You make a motion, okay. I will second any discussion. All right, should we vote? All right, let's vote. All right, everyone has voted. Motion carries three, zero, zero, and two abstentions. Okay. For those still out there, we are going to bring back Commissioner Moore, and while we do that, we are going to propose to move item number three, agenda item three, to a different date. That will be pushed out, and we're going to go to commission reports, staff and commission reports. If we have old business, I think the answer is no. New business, no. And we're moving to staff and commission reports. We'll start with Commissioner Saxina, anything on your end?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Commissioner Moore.
I attended poverty simulation on November 2nd, and having spent a number of years on food stamps as a child, I found this reminder of the struggles that many of our region are facing very timely and helpful. I attended YAPPA on November 9th. This is a, an event, well, actually, it's a months-long event put on by Vice Mayor Chow. And yesterday, I attended the Veterans Day ceremony. And that was very moving, and we really are in debt to our armed forces, veterans, and our first responders.
Commissioner Feng. Pretty long list of things that, activities, I wasn't at the last meeting. On September 28th, I attended Palo Alto Forward Forbidden Homes Tour, which very interesting, very interesting walkthrough, a section of Palo Alto. There was a Housing and Homelessness Panel on 9/30. I attended the Educational Options Dedication. It's a new building for FUHSD on 1001. On 1002, attended a SPUR seminar, which was developmental math, developmental math 101, that kind of talked about the cost of building. Let's see, there was a Reach Code Public Session on 1016. Regnar Community Meeting, this is a CUSD meeting regarding declining enrollment and budget issues on 1022. Another SPUR seminar on 1106 regarding impact fees. And, let's see, I was appointed to the CUSD Facilities Master Plan Committee along with Ms. Gosh. And, let's see, I was also appointed by the Board of Supervisors to represent Santa Clara County on the RM3 Oversight Committee. And that's it.
Great, okay. I attended the YAPPA event as well, and with Congressman Roquana, and been having meetings across the board, really with different community leaders, really trying to understand the balance between business planning and residential requirements. So that's it on my end. With that, we are going to adjourn this very long meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Cupertino.